I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, my name's John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. On behalf of my fellow board members in our Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our October 12th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is brought to you by Mark Sarah of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30 and 330 and Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on Channels 30 and 330 from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. Tonight's meeting will also be available on YouTube starting tomorrow for your viewing pleasure. Preliminary matters, first item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of September 28th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is announcements and reports. Colleagues, any announcements? I just have one. The town of Shrewsbury is going to have two additional Saturday leaf and yard waste drop-off dates, October 23rd, 2021, and November 20th, 2021, timed 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Who was eligible, Shrewsbury residents only. Be prepared to show an ID and where. The Old Beale Elementary School, One Maple Ave in town, right at the center. Leaves need to be in little paper bags for drop-off, and branches must be three inches and be bundled. That's the only item that I have, so next item, there's no materials under Town Manager's report. Next item is special report, actions, updates. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Board members. I'll provide an update on COVID-19 within the community. We're reporting on cases since your last meeting, we've experienced 100 additional cases since September 28th, bringing the total to 3,448. We've seen 53 additional cases within the last seven days, so really steady and consistent elevated trend since the summer into the early fall. We continue to report out to the community every Friday with our weekly case numbers. As an oversight over the last few meetings, we have not reported or updated the board on any deaths, so we wanted to backtrack on that. So unfortunately, since the last time we reported this on June 8th, there has been three additional COVID-indicated deaths, bringing the total to 71. Further, my understanding that there is a recalibration or reconsideration of some prior deaths which may increase this number. We'll be very clear when we report that out as to the timeframe when those deaths occurred, so we'll update you on that as soon as possible. Our trend, as I said, continues. You know, here's the chart that we've been looking at, or the graph that we've been looking at historically, so we're continued up over the summer months and appears to have plateaued. That's always to be determined on what the trajectory is, but a lot of consistency with the number of cases on a weekly basis, both here and across the Commonwealth. With regard to vaccination status, we're pleased to continue to see hundreds of additional first and second doses since your last meeting, and we've achieved 70% of fully vaccination status within the community. Those with at least one dose is already up to 76%, so that's really, that's really good news. Individuals continue to be interested, given the continued spread of the virus. And just providing additional vaccination and demographic data, both for positive cases at the top of the screen, and that spread across the various age groups. And then at the bottom of the screen is the same chart with different year bands for vaccination status. So again, very pleased we're at 70% fully vaccinated within the community. Encourage everyone to continue to consider and make the right decision for themselves and get vaccinated.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is under Meetings and Hearings. We have a 7:05 hearing. It is 7:05. Public hearing with James Kane, Town Moderator, to consider and possibly act on a quorum level adjustment of town meeting quorum requirements for the October 18th, 2021 special town meeting pursuant to Section 7, Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, and Section 8 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, how are you all?
Doing well, thank you.
I'm here to consult and agree.
Excellent. So what we will do is, this being a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing and see if there's any commentary or if there are any questions for Mr. Kane, and we'll close the public hearing and then deliberate at that point. Just a couple data points for historical standpoint, that since March of 2020, we've had three town meetings, two annual and one special. For the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, we had reduced the quorum to 61. We had 154 over at Oak in the Field. In September of 2020, we had a special town meeting, the quorum was 81. We had 143 members. Town meeting members come to that meeting, and then at the 2021 Annual Town Meeting in May, we had a quorum of 100 and we had 172 town meeting members. So those are just a few data points before we go, until we open the public hearing. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there any commentary? Would anyone like to comment on public quorum or the number? Don't see any takers, any questions for Mr. Kane at all before we close the public hearing?
Is the board going to discuss after the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And we can still ask Mr. Kane a question after the public hearing?
Sure. Yep.
What is the number that we are considering as far as the reduction?
So one number that I, just based on the data that we have, the closest comparator that I see from last September where we had 143, as you recall, that was in the high school gymnasium with much better space. The thought is that we've had, obviously, COVID continues and the plan is at Oak in the auditorium, which there'll be social distancing, but there may be some concern for people, so the, my initial thought would be 100, again, to maintain the same number that we had at town meeting. While we've had over the typical quorum as required, it does give a little leeway should 24, so people decide not to attend the special town meeting. So that is the thought, at least my initial thought. Any questions?
Well, just as a follow-up, what is the plan for social distancing?
Mr. Mizikar.
So we have 705 seats in the auditorium area of, or the main seating area. There'll additionally be space seating on the stage for the board and a few members of the Finance Committee and staff. We're going to ask town meeting members to separate themselves among themselves. We're not going to necessarily X out particular chairs and prohibit them. We'll give them the opportunity to spread out throughout those entire 705 seats and past town meetings there. The town clerk's office kind of kept folks grouped in front of their staff so we could do easier counting, but there'll be a limited section in the rear for anyone who's a non-town meeting member, very limited town staff there on hand within a particular area. So the 240 town meeting members would have 705 seats or, you know, 680 seats to choose from and separate themselves out where they feel comfortable.
Any other questions? If not, no commentary from anyone in the audience, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously now in deliberation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. DePaolo.
We did have success in the past in open spaces, and the auditorium certainly was a lot more spread out than, the gymnasium was a lot more spread out than the auditorium is going to be, so I think it'd be prudent to err on the side of caution and drop the quorum at least to 100, just on the outside chance that more people are concerned and won't come to the meeting.
Any other comments?
I agree with that recommendation.
Okay. Anyone? Mr. Kane, thoughts?
Throughout the months, Kevin and I have been communicating, and in the past few weeks, as I've heard certain concerns, we again have communicated regularly. I think as long as we make clear to folks, and I believe Kevin is going to do this in the package, that we won't be pulling people down front as previously alluded to, I think we'll be fine in that setting. For a variety of reasons, I preferred the high school. I know many people did not like the high school setting because of the sound or lack thereof of clear communication, so we'll go to this facility, I think, as long as people space themselves out, just as we do in other settings, I think we'll be fine. I think 100 is a fine number, given our town meeting size.
Okay, thank you. This is Cassavan.
The way that I think about this is, we have students using that space on a daily basis with much less social distancing than we'll be able to maintain that evening, and that everyone in that space is going to be required to be masked and then that spacing between people, I think that 100, dropping it to 100 is reasonable. If we're asking our children, our students to be in there, and we're not seeing significant spread, I think it's relatively safe for our town meeting to take place there.
Okay, thank you.
So another question.
Mr. DePaolo.
Is there going to be a space for people who decide they either don't want to mask or?
Yes.
Like we did in the past?
Yep. And I'll ask the body to deputize a member as a deputy moderator.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the board establish a quorum of 100 for the special town meeting on the 18th.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I guess, I, motion passes unanimously, and I guess the next aspect is just seeking affirmation from the town moderator that 100 is the quorum number.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome back.
What's that?
Welcome back.
I haven't been in this position since I was with Bob Elliott, how many years ago, on the Board of Assessors?
[laughing]
A while ago.
Well, thank you.
So I'll leave and go back to watching Gunsmoke if that's all right with you.
It is, thank you.
Very good, have a great evening.
You too.
See you next week.
Next item on the agenda is under New Business, to review an act to accept as presented by the town clerk, the 2020 reprecincting plan for the town of Shrewsbury. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Got ahead of myself. Seven is to review an act on recommendations for the October 18th, 2021 special town meeting. Sorry, Mr. Mizikar, let me hand it to you.
I'm sure it's up to you.
Got ahead of myself.
Listen, Board members, I'll briefly go through the various warrant articles as we've reviewed them in article form only, so I'll provide a little bit of details with regards to the motions where I think it's appropriate, and happy to answer any questions as you deliberate on your recommendations if you're going to take them this evening. So Articles 1 and 2, I'll continue to talk about together as they're related to each other. Article 1 will establish a new fund for us to manage our non-premium insurance costs, mainly deductibles across all our various lines of insurance, including workers' compensation and injured on duty. Article 2's purpose is to move funding from a previously established account, and that account was established at the May 2000 Annual Town Meeting, transferring the all remaining funds in that account, which is $42,047.55, and raising additional $55,000 from taxation to fund the account that we're establishing within Article 1 of this special town meeting. I don't know if there's any questions, or if you'd just like me to proceed unless I hear something.
Are there any questions on Articles 1 and 2?
Should we, are we going to vote on them as we go, or vote to recommend or not recommend?
I mean, we, we can't. The 1 and 2 are related, so we can take them together, or we can take them separate.
Move we recommend 1 and 2.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion or debate? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Article 3 is an adjustment to the annual operating budget of the town. Board members, as you know, you all committed to the community throughout the months and as we deliberated, override two things. One, to manage the costs going forward within the operating budget and find opportunities to rely upon federal or non-town sources to reduce the burden on taxpayers. Through this article, very pleased to present a plan on your behalf to reduce the budget by $1.7 million. The vast majority of those reductions are coming from the lesser requirements of funding the pension system. We do plan to add funding to several accounts, and in addition, but, excuse me, in addition to reducing the pension funding, we're also able to reduce funding within the debt service area and reducing the amount of funds that's needed to be raised through the exempt process with taxpayers, or reducing Centec North, Sherwood Middle School, and premium and interest for those various projects, and I'll details those out. So with regards to the pension system, we will be reducing the amount of funds that's needed there by $2,241,636. We have achieved full actuarial funding status as of January 1st, 2021. Within the Town Manager's Department, we're proposing to hire a second HR Coordinator's position and create the position of HR Director. We will require $30,000 to be transferred into that, so we'll be transferring funds from the pension system into the Town Manager's Office and then into these other various accounts. Within the Planning Department, we'll be creating the department head-level position of Planning Director. We need $5,200 to do that, to augment the budget. We'll also be creating a second Assistant Town Planner position, and we'll be requesting $30,000 to fund that for the balance of the fiscal year. Within the Emergency Management Department, we'll be proposing to increase that by $16,000 to provide additional compensation in the form of stipends to both the Emergency Management Director and the Deputy Director, given additional workloads associated with their positions. We'll be moving $923,000 to the other post-employment benefits account. This is the town's responsibility for future funding for health insurance it provides to its retirees. We have an accrued liability that we're seeking to reduce over the years, and by funding this, it'll also provide us flexibility in years when additional funding is needed to be placed within the pension, so we'll move funds back and forth between OPEB and pension as needed in order to maintain full funding and reduce our accrued liability for OPEB. Those reductions that I previously mentioned with regards to debt service, there'll be $305,000 reduction for the principal for Centec North, $152,387.50 for the interest for the Sherwood Middle School due to the refinancing, and $46,750.38 for the interest for Centec North. So again, in total, it's a net reduction of $1,741,573.88 is my estimate that the average single-family home within the town will see a tax bill that's $120 less because of those changes that we're proposing in the operating budget.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on Article 3?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. DePaolo.
Just a question, I probably should know the answer, but the interest rate on Sherwood was reduced to .75?
Yep, 3/4 of 1%.
It wasn't reduced by?
Nope, it was reduced.
Okay, so make sure I was reading right.
Yep, reduced to 3/4 of a percent.
That's bad. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move we approve, recommend Article 3.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Jim, does I have a question?
Yeah, Mr. DePaolo.
Mr. Mizikar, on the OPEB?
Mm-hmm.
I know with the pension, when the changes were made, what the contribution rate was for the employees years back, it got, once you were fully funded, it got around a footing where it was basically self-sustaining except for a relatively small, half a million dollars or whatever, relatively small compared to what we're paying, to keep that thing pretty much self-funded except for that small contribution compared to the 6 million or whatever we were putting in. This, is this same thing catch up in the insurance going forward?
It is, yep.
Okay, it's the same thing. I just, it's not, it's, it's to get us caught up with what we owe. It's not like going forward that we're going to have, okay.
Yep, yep, so it's reducing our accrued liabilities.
I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to be sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Article 4.
Article 4, we're seeking to transfer funds within the water utility. This would include transferring $360,146.44. Those funds currently sit in various projects, budgets that we have been able to complete the projects for under budget, and we propose to move all those funds from three, from three projects and place them into the Water Quality Improvement Project and Initiative Account, with the primary focus of funding the balance of the unidirectional flushing program. And in addition to the project closeouts, we propose to use $250,000 from the Water Enterprise Funds retained earnings, that's equivalent to free cash within that self-sustaining account.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to Article 4? Being now entertain a motion.
Move we recommend Article 4.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article 5.
Article 5 is similar in nature and context to Article 4, but it's related to the Sewer Special Revenue Fund. It proposes to move $89,009.62 from two projects which have been completed under budget into the sewer pump station improvement account, which we'll use to both analyze, engineer, and make improvements to the town's 38 pump stations as needed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to Article 5? They bring now, now entertain a motion.
Move we recommend.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article 6.
Article 6 is sort of another milestone project for the board in that you're utilizing $2 million from the sale of Centec North, which occurred at the end of September, for the repair and replacement of Toblin Hill Bridge, Toblin Hill Drive, Nursery Drive, and related structures. This $2 million coming from the sale of Centec North is in a special account under the general laws called Real Estate Receipts Reserved. It's limited in use to anything you can borrow, you can only spend it on things for which you can borrow for at least five years, so it really lines up nice, we're able to take care of a major costly capital improvements for that neighborhood because of the sale of that property.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to Article 6? Then bring now, entertain a motion, please.
Move we recommend Article 6.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article 7, please.
Article 7, this is the second time that we've had an article like this, where we're moving funding that's received and dedicated to the town under the general laws. It originates from a 10-cent surcharge for transportation network companies, most notable companies like Uber and Lyft. When one of those arise, originates within Shrewsbury, the town receives 10 cents, needs appropriated and can be used for limited purposes, and we're proposing the use of this $18,325.20 for repair and improvements to sidewalks, crosswalks, and pedestrian mobility initiatives. So that's, that's those funds. That means that over the course of the past two years, there's been 183,252 rides within the community originating within Shrewsbury.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to Article 7? If not, is there a motion?
Move we recommend Article 7.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article 8.
Article 8 is to utilize $50,000 in free cash to fund the schematic design costs for the replacement of the oak, the windows at the Oak Middle School. This is a partnership program that we've applied to the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program, and again, this is just for the first phase of funding to do schematic design work. We'll likely be back at the Annual Town Meeting in the spring to fund the balance of the cost of the project, which is estimated to be somewhere around $1 million.
Any questions or comments? I have one quick question. So for Oak, when the renovation occurred, they did not do the windows over, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just that someone had that question. Okay, great. Are there no other questions and comments? Entertain a motion, please.
Move we recommend Article 8.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article 9, please.
Article 9 is acceptance of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22G. This is an option that the town has to extend certain real estate tax exemption benefits to veterans whose homes or properties were placed into a trust or conservatorship. This was kind of a negative loophole that was in the law, that would exclude those individuals who otherwise would have been eligible. This closes the loophole and confers that benefit, which is part of the board's continued initiative as we went through the override process and was identified by our new assessor, Ruth Anderson, when she came onboard this spring.
Any questions or comments to Article 9?
Great, just, I'm glad we were able to find that, that we could do it. There's not a lot of places we can, we can do this kind of stuff, so where we can, I think it's helpful, so I thank Mrs. Anderson for finding that, bringing it forward.
Great. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion on Article 9, please.
Move we recommend Article 9.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article 10, please.
Mr. Chairman, Articles 10 and 11 go together. Article 10 establishes a special purpose stabilization fund to benefit the Sewer Special Revenue Fund, which is a separate account that we use to fund and manage the cost of the sewer system. Upon the establishment of that special account, like we've done for our other enterprise funds in the past, we propose to place $1,170,679.43 into that account. $970,679.43 is from the general sewer construction account, which in the past was used somewhat like a stabilization account and called upon to fund major capital improvements. So we're transferring those funds, and then we're also transferring $200,000 that's available from the sewer surplus fund into the account. Putting it into the special stabilization fund provides greater transparency, is appreciated and thought favorably by bonding company, or bond rating agencies, and also means that we'd have to come back to town meeting and have a supermajority vote to use these funds in the future.
Thank you. Any questions on Articles 10 and 11? Now entertain a motion.
Move we recommend Articles 10 and 11.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article 12.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have Town Planner Bernie Cahill come up and explain the next four articles to you, recap them for the board.
Right.
As they are zoning bylaw changes, zoning map change, oh, and Assistant Planner Rowan McAllister as well.
Evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. As the Town Manager alluded to with me this evening, well, first of all, I'm Bernie Cahill, the Town Planner. With me this evening is Rowan McAllister, one of the newest members of the Planning Department, Assistant Town Planner. This evening, we're going through Articles 12, 13, 14, and 15. Rowan played a hand in researching and drafting these articles, so I wanted to have her here this evening to help answer any questions that the board might have. So let's get right to it. Article 12 is to explain very briefly, when the new Beale School was constructed, the right-of-way of Lake Street had to shift slightly to the west. When that happened... When that happened, there was a small portion that needed to be changed for the zoning, because the zoning is based on the right, the location of the center of the right-of-way. So there's a very small portion here that would need to be changed to Residence B one to keep up with what it was before. So it's only in the street, it's not on any property. It's about, I think I explained to someone on the phone the other day about three or four cars could fit in it. So it's not very big, and it's just really a cleanup matter based on what happened with the Beal school. Any questions for that one?
Any questions on article twelve? Please go to article thirteen.
All right.
Thank you.
So article thirteen, I think as many people are aware, during COVID, um, during the COVID pandemic, outdoor dining has become very popular and not only in Shrewsbury, but around the country. So we wanted to take it upon ourselves, as many communities have done, is to kind of ride that train, if you will, um, and continue on with that popularity. And to do that, we wanted to lower some barriers in town. And so we did that for businesses having outdoor, who want to provide outdoor services. So we did that in three ways. The first one is we tightened up the difference of definitions between indoor and outdoor service restaurants and indoor service only. The second thing we did is changed where outdoor dining is required to go before the zoning board of appeals. We've taken that away from the board and made it an internal staff process and not a board process. We've also, for outdoor service, we've added a couple new districts where it's allowed or would be allowed. Limited business, limited commercial businesses, business in addition to where it is today in commercial business. And what this does is it lines it up with where the indoor service is currently allowed. And then finally, as I said before, the final thing is that these will be allowed through staff review and not just through board, or not board review, rather. It would come through staff. And then this board, the selectman, would have the final sign-off once it's gone through staff review. So, any questions about that?
Questions on article?
One question. It looks like there's a footnote twenty-seven that's getting stricken. Is that right, in commercial business?
Yes, correct.
It, it doesn't need to be, or maybe it is, and I don't see it referenced in this, that it's deleted, or is that, does that delete twenty-seven?
So actually, the language above number two, it says anything, the following, inserting the following underlined and bolded language and deleting the struck-through language.
Okay.
Twenty-seven, we think that was actually erroneously put in there at one point. It talks about, um, I think it was like adult uses, if I'm not mistaken, and we're not sure why it's in there. It doesn't actually make any sense why it was there, so we do think it was a mistake at some point that that was put next to that, that use.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, and I'm sorry, you probably said it, I just didn't catch it, and I don't see it in the, in the text. There's a, what's the TCD column?
The Town Center District?
That's what it is.
Yep. No, that's all right. Yeah, actually, this, this was also, I mean, we took what was, uh, what we did at the Town Center District last year. We also, uh, the state came out with some guidelines for outdoor dining, and we leaned heavily on those, those recently came out. And as it happens, they kind of match up with what we've done already, so we're quite pleased about that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Article fourteen, please.
Okay, so of all the ones, this is the more complex ones. Article fourteen, um, we've been meaning to deal with this, we as in the planning department for quite a few years, is to bring our wireless telecommunications towers and facilities up to date with FCC regulations. For those watching at home, that's the Federal Communications Commission at the federal level, if you weren't sure. Uh, and we did this in five different ways. So the first way is we updated the definition for wireless telecommunication tower and facilities. And I'm not going to go through this word for word, it would take too long. The second thing that we did is we introduced a definition for small wireless facilities. So that is the first thing we did, or proposing, I should say, to do. The second thing that we're proposing to do is currently the wireless communications in town is overviewed, or as oversight is by the ZBA, zoning board of appeals. And we are proposing to change that to be overseen by the planning board, which is done in almost every other town. And if you think about it, it makes sense, because most of the time when these different wireless services come to the town, they are providing us with a site plan, so to have site plan approval by the planning board, we thought, made an awful lot of sense. Also, we've taken the new small wireless facility definition and put it also in the use table under this proposal. And then gave it the same oversight with the planning board. So that was number two. Number three, what we did, or were proposing to do, is to create a new subsection of the zoning bylaws, section V for wireless communications. We currently don't have one. What this would do is establish standards and criteria for the special permit that the planning board would provide to service providers who are proposing an antenna or tower in, in town. And within that, number four would be something called, and this is kind of really new, I say new, since we last updated these, which is many years ago. So say the last twelve to fifteen years, is something called an eligible facilities request, which is simply, currently, if there's been any change out of antennas on, like even a like-for-like antenna, we've said special permit. That is actually not allowed by federal regulation, and they have criterias for this. So a like-for-like antenna replacement would be just an internal review only and not a board review, if that makes sense. So small changes are allowed under what's called an eligible facilities request. Um, and I believe I mentioned the criteria already established for site plan and special permit. And then finally, number five is proposing some explanation for small wireless facilities. So broken down into two different locations. One is any proposal that is within a public right-of-way. So as we just talked about on Lake Street, every street has a right-of-way, even outside of the paved zone of a street. So if someone were to propose a small wireless within that right-of-way, it would be the purview under this of Selco. Because Selco, currently, that is where their utilities are, and most likely, a small cell would be proposed to be on one of their already-owned telephone poles, if you will, or other thing that they might have sticking out of the ground within that right-of-way. So Selco would have ultimate oversight of that for not only the technical aspect, but they, uh, we've been working with Selco, so I should probably say this, uh, we've been working with Selco, the planning department, to come up with some criteria for aesthetics that they would be using in their review. And then finally, any small wireless located outside of that public right-of-way would, as we mentioned earlier, be the oversight of, be subject to the oversight, if you will, of the planning board. So that's the small wire, uh, excuse me, wireless telecommunications. So any?
Any questions or comments? Ms. Mrs. Cassavian.
How many do we have in town, towers?
I don't know the total, but I can find out.
No, it's not. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no good question.
Just wondering.
Great question.
Cause you went through this whole really detailed, you know, article, so I'm assuming we must have more than I'm thinking.
We have at least three that I know of.
Any other questions or, Mr. DePaulo?
Mr. Cahill, um, under three, the special permit?
Yes.
Why is the special permit only granted for five years? If I, am I reading that right?
It's only granted for five years.
Under?
Yes.
Why is that?
So that the town can have a re-review of it after a five-year period. Oftentimes, we put special permits, so even at sort of smaller uses, um, a great example would be an at-home business. We actually ask them to come with, back to the ZBA after a year to provide the board with an update.
I, I understand why we do it with those uses. I'm a little confused why we do it with that. That's in clientsite with federal regulations?
Yes, we're allowed to ask them to come back.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I mean theoretically, you can tell them to take it down?
Um, so, no.
Okay.
Outside, I'm, so, no, you can't actually ask them to take it down, um, that I'm aware of. I don't know if you've come across anything around that I've missed.
So, I'm having trouble understanding why you'd have it in there. If you're not gonna have them stop using it, I don't understand what you would, what you would do, when to approve it.
True. Um, I think it is, if anything changes in the interim, any other regulations, if it's not meeting the aesthetic needs of the town. For example, if they promised, the service provider promised one thing and didn't come through on it, or we get lots of complaints saying that equipment's too large, or it's in my view from my window, we could bring it back and say, you're not meeting what we're requiring in this, uh, requirements for special permits. That's how I would see it.
I don't want to belabor it, but if they didn't meet the requirements of the special permit a year later, why couldn't you just enforce it?
Yeah, we could.
Okay, I'm good.
We can consider it.
I don't want to get too much in the weeds.
No, that's all right.
Any other questions on article fourteen? Mr. Mizikar also let me know that we have ten cell towers in town?
According to Miss Anderson.
Oh, great, thank you.
She's the expert.
All right, great. Thank you. Real-time information here. Any other questions? If not, let's go to article fifteen, please.
Certainly. So this one is for the Town Center District and determining, uh, well, we wanted some time to determine where we thought the Town Center District best fit into the existing inclusionary zoning bylaw. After a lot of discussion and debate internally, and after looking over the surrounding zoning districts to the Town Center District, we settled on proposing twelve point five percent as a requirement for any development that has five or more units in it, or any development that has five or more lots. We're not necessarily anticipating the lots. I don't think a subdivision like that would fit in the Town Center District. But certainly units coming in. If someone were to propose, say, a fifteen-unit apartment, it would be twelve point five percent of that. That fits with the two surrounding residential districts, Residence B one and B two, which also are twelve point five percent. And that's it. I don't want to belabor that either. That's, the, the rest of the language is just literally inserting the language into the zoning.
Any questions or comments on article fifteen? Being none, so unless.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mizikar.
Mr. Cahill may just inform the board how the planning board voted at their public hearing?
Oh, yes.
If they've done so.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, the planning board at last Thursday's meeting voted unanimously to recommend all four of these articles presented this evening.
Thank you.
So are you looking for motion for these?
Unless there's an objection, I'd entertain a motion to approve article, or motion for articles twelve through fifteen.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor to recommend, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Article sixteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
Uh, article sixteen, board members, is the request to use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash to acquire a portion of four thirty-nine Lake Street in order to make roadway improvements. The primary detail behind that would be to soften the very sharp and off camber, which is geo- geometrically inappropriate, or in, you know, contrary to how you would build it today within Lake Street adjacent to four thirty-nine. This parcel has been subdivided through an A and R lot, so four thirty-nine as an address resides with a lot that was carved out for the home, but for description purposes with the registry of deeds, that's still appropriate. We would seek to acquire about one acre of land immediately adjacent to the, the sharp curve through this article. And then seek funds in the future to complete the project, both from construction and any other land that may be needed.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
This is a, um, a piece of roadway that personally I've driven since I was licensed, actually, probably before that. And always thought it would be good to try to straighten that thing out, because it's, it's an old cow path. So you, you're going down, make a sharp turn, then you go up, and you got tight, or restricted sightlines. So this land happened to come up for sale. And obviously, this section of it is vacant. It's going to be sold, it was proposed to be sold for house lots. And I approached the manager about possibly seizing the opportunity to have that land so that we could make improvements in the future if we saw that we needed to. It's one of the rare instances in town where there was vacant land next to the road that is available to, to be able to do that. There were a lot of other places in town where there were shop corners, and we could name a bunch of streets. They have houses on them, or other things that would prevent us from doing the work. So looking ahead with Beal opening up, I can't tell you how many more cars there's gonna be, but it just comes sense that there's gonna be more cars on that road. And although Market Basket was not required to do a traffic study that included that, or even South Consignment Avenue, if you look at the map, it seems reasonable to expect that whether we want it or not, people are gonna use that as a, as a quick route to cross over to Route twenty. So it's an opportunity. It, it's not, that, that road is not a road that we haven't talked about in the past. We talked about it twenty years ago. Actually talking about doing something much more extensive. Applying for a tip grant through the Central Met Mass, uh, Metropolitan Planning Agency. Do a program similar to West Main Street, certainly not making the road like that. But at the time, there wasn't a lot of support to do that, so we didn't. This is a small section of road. It doesn't propose, actually, right now, it's soon as proposing to buy the land. And at some point, we decide we don't need the land, because this traffic doesn't materialize, town so, so desired, we could sell it. So I guess the main point is, it's an opportunity. If we don't buy it and the house goes the air, that's the end of that, and the road's gonna stay that way forever, so that's the logic behind it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Only comment I have is, um, this is, when I think about planning, and we're talking about strategic planning shortly, looking to get approval to move forward with a consultant to go forward. To me, when Mr. DePaulo talks about this, it's one of strategy. So it's being in a position, taking an opportunity and acting on it, and that's how I view this parcel. If one tries to get traffic data, there may or may not be accidents there, but it's a question of looking forward, and the opportunity's here, and it's to take the opportunity to mitigate or prevent what could or may happen. And that's what this gives an opportunity. Now, the land's available. It's, someone may ask, different roads, you look at Hill Street, you look at High Street. There are multiple other roads in town that have blind corners, sharp corners. We all know, we drive through them with caution, but land hasn't been available. So that is the difference here, and this is an opportunity to be strategic, how I look at it. So I, I appreciate the article, and, and I think it's a good opportunity for us. And as you said, should it materi, should it not materialize, there's still options for us going forward to monetize. Any other questions or comments besides the car horn outside? And no more?
It's not mine, then. I parked it up.
Not, I will.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please.
I, I agree, there's an opportunity here, and I agreed to put this on the warrant to allow town meeting the opportunity to decide what it wanted to do here. But I personally do not feel that this is a priority use of funds for the town. But again, I agree that it is an opportunity that the town should be able to consider.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion for article sixteen.
Move, we recommend article sixteen.
Second.
All, so I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against? Aye. All those against?
No.
No? So motion passes four to one. Thank you. We have everything we need for Agenda Item Number Seven. I won't skip over it this time, so I'll go to Agenda Item Number Eight, to review an act to accept, as presented by the Town Clerk, the 2020 reprecincting plan for the town of Shrewsbury. Mr. Mizikar, if I could hand it over to you to make the introduction?
Yep. So Board Members, every 10 years after the data is compiled from the United States Census, cities and towns, under the guidance and direction of the Commonwealth, are asked to look at their voting precinct boundaries and ensure that they stay within the parameters of state law, which includes having no more than 4,000 individuals in any precinct, and each precinct falling within a certain, certain percentage threshold of all the rest. So that's the endeavor that was undertaken by the Assistant Town Manager and Town Clerk, and they're here this evening to inform the board of the results and recommendation.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Lass, the Assistant Town Manager.
Sharon Thomas, Town Clerk.
Welcome.
So I'll just further detail the, the project, and then let Sharon talk about the reprecincting and the maps. As you know, we received the 2020 census data. It was quite later than expected due to what the federal government is calling COVID delays. And we were briefed several times by state representatives working under this project on how to work with the data, that no precinct should have more than 4,000 residents, and that we should not be splitting demographic populations when looking at the reprecincting data. And we worked as a team, myself, Ms. Thomas, Dan McCullough, the GIS Coordinator, Bernie Cahill, the Town Planner, and Andy Truman, the Town Engineer, to review the data, to review what was done in 2010, and then to establish a set of, series of draft maps for consideration, which our group ultimately recommend Draft Map Number Two to you this evening. So I'll turn that over to Sharon to further detail the data.
So with Draft Map Two, you know, the attempt was to keep boundary lines unchanged where possible, you know, this allowing the voters to stay with where they're already familiar. Under Draft Map Two, precincts three, eight, and nine remain unchanged, and then precincts two and six required boundary changes to reduce the population below 4,000, and precincts four and five required boundary changes to increase the population to be within the minimum 5% variance allowed.
So this evening, you do have before you Draft Map Number Two that shows the areas that would change. You might need to blow it up a little bit on your screen to understand what that is. But we tried to be as mindful as possible to make as few changes as necessary, but also be mindful in the future that our population will be growing in some areas, such as the Route 20 corridor and other areas. We, that's why we have the Town Planner and the Town Engineer involved in the process, so we would understand where our populations would be growing over the next 10 years. And what we were mindful to keep with 10 precincts is we're clearly running out of space for voting at this time, and it would be a huge lift to establish a new precinct within that minimum period of time. So we're happy to answer any questions that you might have this evening.
Any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I appreciate all the work you did in this. I know it's really hard to, to do this without really creating a major upheaval in the precincts. But I, I do have a question. Version three, or version three, effectively, and I forgot to bring calculations that I did, basically, it came out pretty even the way the precincts would break up in terms of Town Meeting Member representation. I think both plans are going to have two precincts with 23 and two with 25, which is, there's no way we're going to get them perfect. But I'm wondering, it, it appears to me, and, and maybe it's something I'm not seeing here, that version three seems to be a little bit less disruptive in changing the zones than version two, because it could be wrong, but version three, you're not touching precinct seven, you're not touching precinct nine, I don't think you're touching, no, you are touching precinct 10 in, in three. But, so it's the same amount of precincts, but seven doesn't get changed up a little bit, and precinct five has a little bit of, almost like a couple of streets that, that get taken from precinct eight, but it keeps the precinct on the same side of the street that it is now. So I'm wondering why you would recommend two over three? I, I think functionally, there's not a whole lot of difference in terms of the way the Town Meeting Members break out, but it, it just seems like it's less intrusive to me than, than two. So I'm just wondering.
We did have that conversation with the GIS Coordinator, Sharon. I don't know, looking at the numbers.
I, I want to say it was from the neighborhood to try to avoid the
The J.
The hook, and to keep it, you know, under the other one, it takes a portion, so it's more rounded, and it's not that hook around.
Well, if I might, I, I don't think, I mean, we could take the soft line, too, but I, I don't think that little hook is any more disruptive than taking two chunks out of precinct seven, or moving into precinct seven, whichever way they're going. It seems to me, there's a smaller population that's affected by it, by the move. And, and that's...
But I don't think it, doesn't give you as much, I think under the Draft Map Two, you have more room for the, for the change in the precincts than you do under the Draft Three.
You mean for growth?
Right. So under Draft Three, precinct seven's at 3,990.
Yeah.
And under Draft Two, it is...
3819.
Right.
But the, but over, over time, and, and every five years, we have to look at this again anyways, right?
Well, in five years, it, it'll just be reallocation amongst the precincts.
Right.
But not
Right, not changing the lines, okay. But...
Just Town Meeting Members would be reallocated according to the population that we get off of the local census data.
Okay. But it's still allowed to go up 5%, right? Not, not, isn't it allowed to...
They have to be within 5% of the...
Of the 38, 33, right?
Yes.
Okay. So there's room for growth in there. I'm not married to either one of them. I, I just, I'm just looking at what's the least disruptive. And to me, that seems like it's less disruptive, but I, I see a point on that. So I'd like to think about that.
Okay. Any other questions before I entertain it? What, what I'm hearing from you, and I'm, I'll actually ask myself that, ideally, is there a rea, does a vote have to be taken on this this evening? Are there any time pressures that we need to do?
We have to have, our information has to be submitted to the state by October 30th.
Okay, so if we were to take this up on the 26th, we're still fine? You'll have enough lead time?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like a little more time to look at the versions.
Sure.
Most, Mr. DiPaolo's gone through this before, admittedly. This is my first time through getting it.
Mine, too.
So you're doing a great job. If I could get a little more time on my end, if it's okay with the rest of the board, to have another couple of weeks to digest this, ask questions, and then the expectation would be, we take this up on the 26th? Is that good? Any other questions?
May I?
Oh, please, Mrs. Flynn.
Chairman asked, just some tactical questions. Does this change the number of, of Town Meeting Members?
It does not. They're just, like, 240 Town Meeting Members, and it'll, it'll just be recalculated over the precincts based on the populations under the new precincts.
So the number per precinct may change, just not the aggregate total?
Right. Like under Draft Map Two, like Mo was saying, two of the precincts have 23, two of them have 25, and the remaining are at 24.
Under, okay. May I ask another question?
Please, proceed.
What is the process of someone who is an elected Town Meeting Member falls into?
Okay, so, so once the, once the map is voted on here, and it's submitted to the state, it has to be approved, and then the calculation will be done according to the bylaws. And then all Town Meeting Members would, they'll get a letter come January, and everybody will be on the ballot, and then the top third get the three-year seat, the next get the two-year, and the other ones get the one-year seat.
Ms. Flynn?
So everybody will be running for reelection.
Isn't that only in the precincts that have their footprint changed?
We're conferring with Town Council.
Council.
Because the state did not have that under their law.
Maybe just the little bough members, but, and I thought the precincts that didn't change didn't have to go through that.
We're just confirming that nothing's...
It could have changed.
We're just confirming that with Town Council.
Yeah, essentially, everybody's off.
Right. But it would be at least, you know, you're talking that seven precincts changing, so in those seven, that would be what the process would be.
And the other benefit to the redistricting and reallocating is it's going to smooth the precincts back out to closer to 24. Like, we're right now
Right.
nine because of population changes and that, and that reallocation we talked about. It's considerably lower than some other precincts that are
Right, because our local...
Up to 28 at least.
Yeah, the local census numbers are a lot lower than what the federal are.
So that was the question I had, because I have a hard time with these kinds of puzzles. They're not something that my mind wraps around easily. So when we lost four seats in precinct nine, they're actually going to gain more seats when we redraw the lines. Is that what happens?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
And precincts that were up over 24 are going to, most of them are going to come back down to 24, so there'll be a shift again. So just like precinct nine lost some in the annual census, some of the, some of the precincts that gained because of annual census
Could lose again.
See those drop down, so...
So then, just as a follow-up question, not related, I noticed in the maps that when you pulled a section out, it always came from the higher part, like the northern section of the map. Like, why only from the top are you pulling instead of taking from, like, if you were using Route Nine as the line, taking anything close to Route Nine and moving it lower? You know what I'm saying? Like, all of the changes are, I guess, in the northern part of town.
Northern part of their...
Except for a small part of forentown.
Yeah.
Little teeny thing.
Just what, I'm just curious as to how you went about the process of deciding where to pull pockets of population and move them. And I think some of it might have to do with not disrupting demographics.
Well, you can't disrupt a census block either, so areas are, are tied to the block that they're in, and those can't be split. Those have to remain whole.
Okay. And are those on this map?
The census blocks are those small num, red numbers.
You need to blow the map up to really...
Yeah, I know, when I blow the map up, then I lose pieces of it, like, I don't see it all, so then I can't make sense of it.
Any other questions? Okay. So we'll take this up on the 26th? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
Thanks for the information. Next item on the agenda under New Business is to review an act on the adoption of nondiscrimination notice in accordance with the requirements of Title II of the Americans with Disability Act of 1990. Mr. Mizikar, are there any changes? Is this an annual requirement, or this is just reaffirmation every X years, or?
Yeah, this is a, this is identified through one of our grant processes. We could not determine the last time if it was ever voted, so this is, there's certainly no substantive changes to the act or anything that we have in the past complied with, but we're just seeking the fresh vote on it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move, we adopt a nondiscrimination notice.
Second.
The movement in second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the streetlight request from Roger Duchesne, 19 Willett Drive, for a streetlight in the corner of Audubon Drive and North Quincyman Avenue. So here, we'd just be taking a vote to send DeSelgo for their evaluation. Their, it's a pleasure of the board.
Move, we do so.
Second.
The movement in second, and all those say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to authorize the Town Manager to negotiate an agreement with a consultant in connection with the Shrewsbury Strategic Plan. I'll hand this over to Mr. Mizikar, but I'll also provide some feedback. So I'll turn it over to you, and then I'll be excited to jump in as well.
Great, thank you very much. So, Board Members, as, as you know, we started the most formal aspects of our strategic planning process in September. Whenever we went out under procurement laws of the Commonwealth to seek a consultant and partner in helping us set a vision for the community for 2030, and developing a strategic plan that underpins that vision so we can achieve or work towards the vision. Throughout the course of that process, we had over 30 firms that initially indicated they were interested, and ultimately in the end, we had five firms submit full formal qualifications and price proposals to the town. With those proposals in hand, a small team that included myself, Assistant Town Manager Lass, Taylor Galusha, David Snowden, and selectmen John Samia reviewed each one of those proposals in great detail, and ranked them within the rubric and matrix that was provided in the RFP. That led us to two finalists, and brings us here this evening with our recommendation to begin negotiations with a consulting firm called Raftellus. Raftellus is a group that has great experience in local government consulting, both in the utility side and general business operations and strategic planning specifically. They've worked with literally hundreds of municipalities across the Commonwealth, including our neighbors to the west, the Westboro. They're finalizing the second reiteration of Nantucket's strategic plan as we speak, and they've worked with large and very progressive communities throughout the country, including Alata, Kansas, in the development of their strategic plan. Alata, Kansas is a, a community that we've looked towards their model as we've had these discussions in the past with the board. So I found personally, and I think was supported by the group, that Raftellus provided a very clear and concise plan. They provided clarity in the number of public engagement sessions and approach that they'll take. They've demonstrated their ability to do that both in pre-COVID and, and current more restricted times. They embraced the town's concept of using the National Community Survey in advance of their work, and indicated many ways in which we could properly track performance measures upon the completion of the strategic plan. Because of their experience, because of those very strong points that they brought to the table, and also because of their interest to be flexible with the town and utilizing town staff, kind of a train-the-trainer model, so we can get even deeper engagement in the community, I felt most comfortable with recommending them, and I, I feel that reflects the opinion of my colleagues as well. But, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you for any further comments.
Sure. No, you summarize it very well. One of the plans that we looked at early on was Alata, Kansas. I view that as the gold standard of town planning. Mrs. Cassavan and I had an opportunity to speak with the Assistant Town Manager with Mr. Mizikar pre-COVID, and there was a glowing recommendation on their interaction with Raftellus, and through the process and through the community engagement. And that's what rippled throughout the response to our, our RFP. When you look at the scope of work and the elements that we required, part of it was get to know the town operations and information, facilitate a community visioning process, really getting involved with stakeholder groups. Raftellus was very big on this. They have a lot of experience. And the, like with Alata, Kansas, something, and many of the other plans that have been extremely successful, it's getting all stakeholders involved out to the community. extremely successful, it's getting all stakeholders involved out to the community. That's very important. So it's more of a proactive approach, getting community feedback, as opposed to just having central location and you get a digital survey, you're on your computer. But this is getting out to the ball fields, having as many town employees as part of the process, and getting to as many different groups, so we hear all voices in the community. And Raftellus has a track record of doing that. Not that the others didn't, but we were looking at other elements in terms of a clear set of goals, action steps, steps and policy statements, ways in which the town can be structured to best fulfill the goals and action, draft a final plan document for review and presentation, and their timeline was tight. They had the various tasks lined up, some were overlapping, and as Mr. Mizikar stated, it's train the trainer. And that is what's so empowering about what they had to offer, that the best way to facilitate community engagement is to have all stakeholders believe in the process and be part of it. And I thought they did the best job doing that and being able to bring us forward within the desired, say, 12-month period, and get us really moving towards our visioning and having a successful strategic plan that will bring us to 2030. Yet be quick and nimble and also flexible as changes happen in the community over the next, say, eight or nine years when this is done. So I pulled up sort of my review of them, and it just, the consultant has set a clear vision to complete the scope of work required for developing a strategic plan through 2030 for the town, and that's a pretty benign statement, yet it's very meaningful if you look at what they presented and they responded. They looked at Shrewsbury. They had an action plan looking at our town. They had a feeling as to who we are. They have also looked at Westboro, they've looked at Nantucket, we're all different, I get that, but they're also in Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, and it's not. A couple of the other plans, they had been down in the south or Midwest, but every area is slightly different, and I think they have a good knowledge of New England and Massachusetts in particular, as well as our town government model. So it was really good stuff, and I also concur and recommend that we could empower Mr. Mizikar to move forward negotiating this agreement, and the final agreement could come back to us for approval. Any questions?
I have one question.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I must have missed it, but where are they out of? Where are they headquartered?
I think their offices are Cincinnati, Ohio.
It's in Ohio?
Yep.
Could it be North Carolina?
But they're located
I'm on their website, it says Charlotte, North Carolina, but it's Ohio.
But they have offices throughout, too.
But they've done a lot in Massachusetts, so do they have any presence here? I'm just curious.
I don't think they have any offices in the Commonwealth, no.
And I guess my last question is, I dealt with consultants from out of state, and is there, is there a commitment for time they'd actually physically be here? And I know COVID changes all of that, but that they would be, yeah, boots on the ground?
Absolutely.
That's part of it?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the, that's to get this going, to make sure we go down the right path. They get here to know the town, the government, learn the documents, the town governance documents that we have, the plans, because part of this, right, is to look at all the plans already in place, the master plan, town center visioning plan, anything that we have in place to see how it syncs up with the master plan. And the only way to do that is to come here. You know, in terms of background, just to also, for Raftellus, the principal consultant on this job would be a former Assistant Town Manager from Lexington. So this individual has worked in the government, municipal governments locally, very familiar with the structure, and yes, absolutely, they'd be here several times, and that'd be part of the final negotiated sort of set of tasks, but we'd expect them to be here as part of this process quite a bit.
Good.
Good questions. Anything else?
Yeah, just also to add, Ms. Novak, who you referenced, her office is the Cincinnati address that was in my head. She's, in addition to Nantucket, she's also working with the town of Lexington right now as well. Lexington, Westboro, and Nantucket right now.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Just a comment.
Yes, please.
Thank you for all the great work, and it sounds really exciting.
Yeah, it's, thank you to Mr. Mizikar, this is last to Ms. Galusha, Mr. Snowden. It was great conversations, you know? It was a little interesting to have the opportunity to read through their response to RFP and then have an opportunity to sort of speed date real quickly, you know, to get a feel as to who they are, what makes them tick, and it's hard when you're on Zoom or Google Meet, but you can get a good enough feel here. Unfortunately, when you look at the number of communities that Raftellus has done over the years, they've done a lot of different plans, so it's not a one-size-fits-all, and that's what really is exciting about this. They've seen it all, and they're not coming in with a preconceived notion of what this plan should be, but they want to hear from us, and they really get it, that we want to hear from the community to understand what the priorities are to drive this forward. So just want to thank everyone for their involvement, too. It was a lot of good work and had a lot of great responses as well to RFP. So if there are no other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion to act the town manager to negotiate an agreement with Raftellus in connection with the Shrewsbury Strategic Plan.
So, second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is agenda item number 12. We had, as we mentioned at our last meeting, we would take a look at policy 12. It had been last reviewed in 2016 and had been before that, 2001, originally adopted in 1998. As you see, there were a couple surgical changes. The overall policy remains predominantly the same, but part of it was a look at and review in light of some correspondence we received at our last meeting. Any questions or comments?
I think it's, I think it's a good update. I think it's important, and I think it addresses signs that should be, when appropriate, installed by the town, as opposed to just general nation sign. So I think whoever, I think you look at it, Mr. Samia, but whoever
Mr. Mizikar and I collaborated on it.
It hasn't, I don't think it's been updated for a while.
Great. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move we, move we revise policy six to be consistent with what we see in the red line and the clean copy of the red line.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mizikar, for your help on that. Next item on the agenda under new business is to review an act on the one-day beer and wine license request of Pamela LeBeau, St. John's High School, 378 Main Street, for October 15th, 2021, for the delivery and storage of beer and wine, October 16th, 2021, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for serving of beer and wine at a class reunion event, and October 17th, 2021, for the storage and disposal of beer and wine.
With approval.
The second, but I have a question.
Yes.
I don't ever recall having to do a license for storing beer and wine. Is that something new?
I think it's always, oh, no, I think, it's always been the requirement that if there's alcohol on the premise, it needs to be licensed for that, so I don't know if most events are just one day and in and out, and they're looking for a longer timeframe given the hours. I'm not sure, but.
Interesting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
All right, a second.
I'm sorry, if I missed that. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will go into executive session, and we'll come back to that. Now to correspondence. Email dated September 28th, 2021, from Deborah A. Wagner, Director of Accounts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue regarding the notification of free cash approval, so certification of our ending cash balances. Any comments to that, Mr. Mizikar?
No, no, just another very strong year for free cash, which is our, you know, cash position at the end of the year and year over year, and the same goes for our various utilities, including solid waste and stormwater and drinking water. So just very pleased with those numbers.
Oh, they're very strong. Thank you. So noted. Next item is email dated October 3rd, 2021, from George Smith, 33 Clue Street, regarding the Shrewsbury Community Animal Hospital zoning violation. I have since responded to Mr. Smith in recommending an approach going forward, so if there's an alleged violation, we can get boots on the ground there to determine what's going on on a real-time basis. So noted. Next item is under 18, letter received October 4th, 2021, from Kenneth Sturgis, 164 Grafton Street, regarding Lake Street and Route 140, traffic light that's so noted. I understand that we have responded back to that individual. We owe a response, we reached out to the DPW, and will we be getting a subsequent response to that individual soon? Next item is a letter dated October 5th, 2021, from Amy Penny, Marketing and Office Manager for Creedon &amp; Co. regarding Section 12C Caterers Liquor License Notice of Event, 1024, 2021, so noted. Next item is an email dated October 6th, 2021, from Glenn Renegan, Renahan or Gan, 73 Grove Street, regarding news flash COVID-19-related Board of Health Executive Order effective October 12th, 2021. We were copied on this correspondence. The question that Mr. Renegan was asking about was explaining behind the order. The Board of Health had approved an executive order on October 5th. There were three executive orders, one of which relates to wearing masks in public places, and that was just a question regarding how they concluded, came to their conclusion, questioning the vaccination rate, but the information that also was looked at when this was put in place related to the number of cases and the case rate that we had, but that was done on October 5th by the Board of Health, so noted. Next item is ZB, actually, I'll take the next, 1, 2, 3, 4, items 21 through 24 in tandem. They're all ZBA decisions of September 27th, 2021, so noted. If there are no other items to discuss, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the following reasons. Under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property, the former Beal School, 1-7 Maple Avenue, and second reason, under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to enter an executive session pursuant to General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 2A6, and Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, for the purposes listed on the agenda.
Second.
Been moved in second, and a roll call vote is required. Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia? Aye. Motion passes. The board unanimously, the board will now convene into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property, and B, for General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager. Furthermore, the board will not reconvene back into open session. Thank you for joining us, and good night.